So, alright. Well, are you guys ready to get back to Revelation?
Yes.
I mean, we've technically always been there, but we were just taking these little, you know, excursus into different topics, you know, afterlife and afterlife destinations. And then also with the commandments last week. And thank you again for your patience as I talked through that for a couple hours. So let's go ahead and start with a word of prayer and then we're gonna jump back into 14. We'll do a quick review over the chapter and then just keep moving forward. So let us pray. Now, we thank you for this day, the beautiful day that it is, and thank you for the time that we can approach your word, to study, to look into it deeply. And Father, we pray that your Spirit would guide and direct us through this time. Help us to understand these things. Help us to integrate them into our lives, into our theological framework, into our understanding of who you are and our place in this world and what that looks like. Help us to put these things into action that we would live differently. That we would follow your Son Jesus ever closer. Father, we pray that as we discuss these things tonight, that you would extend your grace to us and that we would approach these things with all humility. We thank you. Thank you for the testimony of your word, the faithful preserving of it. And that 2,000 years later, we can read these words as recorded by the Apostle John, the vision that you have given him of the things to come. Pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright. So, we got into 14 some time ago, a few months ago, who's counting, whatever. So after addressing the beast from the sea and the beast from the earth, then we're confronted with the Lamb and the 144,000 who are on Mount Zion. And then we're introduced with a vision of an angel with the gospel. And the gospel here, "The good news, an eternal gospel to preach to those who live on the earth and to every nation and tribe and tongue and people." And he said with a loud voice,[206.38][206.41]"Fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come." Worship him who made the heaven and the earth and the sea and springs of waters. And then a second angel. So if you're keeping track here, we've got the one with the gospel. And then here's verse 8, the judgment on Babylon. "Another angel, a second one, followed, saying, 'Fallen, fallen is Babylon the great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality.'" So then another angel, a third one, "Follow them," saying with a loud voice. "If anyone worships the beast and his image and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger, and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb." So, Angel 3, warning about the mark, it's verses 9 through 12, we get into some detail. You know, just a reminder, as we talked about the mark, just comparing it with Deuteronomy 6, with binding, you know, God's commands to your hand and to your forehead as frontals on your forehead. This is something that is lived out, right? Living out God's commands or living in the way of the beast, right? And this is something that is a point of tension because actually in both groups that we see potentially a physical mark being done. So we can take this in a spiritual principle first, and then I think secondary, understanding that there still could potentially be a physical mark of allegiance. And that's the word that really encompasses anything with the mark is, who is your allegiance to? And it's those who have pledged their allegiance to the beast that will suffer this wrath, this punishment. And that is being tormented with fire and brimstone or sulfur in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb. And maybe you're already thinking of some of the framework that, you know, as we talked about the lake of fire or with hell, with is that a forever and ever, right? If you're thinking of Sandlot, that's okay. Or is it more terminal where there is that immediate suffering, but then boom, no more. And we're talking at a soul level there. Anybody remember we were talking about those different, you know, theology à la carte for punishment in the afterlife? So, and then not, almost not worth mentioning, but the purgatorial view where, you know, you can suffer for a time and then get out on good behavior. Whatever. So, verse 11, "And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever; they have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name." So that sounds a little bit more definitive, but here is the perseverance of the saints. This is what we were talking about last week, who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. And I think just as a summary point for that, that kind of hearkens back to Deuteronomy 6. So we have the mark of the beast and then we have the mark of Yahweh. And that, that was perfect. And the allegiance and obedience to him. So when we're living that out, we're living that out to Yahweh and obedience to him at the cost and contrary to the commands of the beast. So making it fully and very evident. So, "And I heard a voice from heaven saying, 'Right, blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on.'" So I don't know where your rapture theory is landing right now at this point, but we're pretty far, pretty late into the game here. Now, if you're like, Luke, you really haven't talked about the rapture very much, you're right, I won't. And but here that we still have some dying in the Lord, right? "Yes, says the Spirit, so that they may rest from their labors, for their deeds follow with them." Just a reminder that the deeds here, their rest from their labors. What the Spirit is saying is, it's not talking about you continuing to work your nine to five as a Christian, even in these end times. The labors that are being talked about here is actually like going and sharing the gospel and making disciples. It is the Matthew 25, taking care of the poor, the naked, the hungry, the thirsty, those in jail, like all of those things. That's the labors that are being mentioned here. It's real easy to like just read right over some of this stuff. But it's worth noting that like, you know, God did not put us here on the earth just to work a nine to five. Or 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM, you know, like it's so much more than that. Now, there is a whole theology of work. We were made to work, right? Some even think of that like, you know, being put in the garden, six days to work, one day to rest, you know, somebody like everybody gets to focus on the Sabbath and be like, well, there's a day of rest. Yep. And, you know, by having a command to rest on one day, there's an implied command to work on six. To work for six. And so, you know, so definitely labor is a part of the human experience. But what we're talking about here at this time is the labor for the kingdom of God. In total, like in the midst of adversity, completely contrary to the works of the beast, of the dragon, and as it's being manifested with the beast. So, it just a reminder, as we're talking about beast, when I, I mean, instead of, I could just go the rest of this book and instead of saying beast, just say government. Does that just hit different? Does that just like, is that a little bit chilling almost? You know, obviously if we were in China, if we were in Russia, if we were in Iran, if we were in, you know, Morocco or, you know, different countries around the world where there's a lot less freedom, or maybe a certain level of control and authority that does not tolerate Christianity, boy, this would all get, this would get real, real fast. So when we talk about the beast, like we're talking about, we're talking about government. And that's not wrong, that's not bad to say, but it's just, I think it's helpful for us to understand these things. Whether it's the beast that Daniel saw, whether it's Rome in John's time, like that was their government. So, and whether it's a democracy or a dictatorship, you know, or monarchy, whatever it is, you know, it is still, still government. It could be a democracy filled with, you know, pagans in leadership, voting against you, right? Was it, democracy is like four wolves and a sheep voting, what's for dinner? So it's just understanding that like, you know, and I only talk about this because we might have preconceived notions of what that's gonna look like. And it's just a matter of like understanding what the text says, what it doesn't, and us prioritizing what it is that we're called to do. And so the labors here, circling back, the labors and the deeds that will follow them. And that means that like they go with us into the afterlife. And this is kind of the idea of crowns and rewards and different things, all the stuff that we humbly don't want to talk about. But these are the things that are in service to the kingdom of God. So, important to note. Alright, are we ready for verse 14? Any questions so far? That was my 30-minute intro? Alright, we're back up to speed. So once again, we got, we still got Mounts, we still got Keener, and we have Kaster. Maybe I should just start calling him Keester. That's what it looks like. So, alright, verse 14, "Then I looked, and behold, a white cloud; and sitting on the cloud was one like a son of man, having a golden crown on his head and a sharp sickle in his hand." So, so I am thinking, I don't know if you guys remember this a long time ago, but outlining it, like, is this a potential, like another seven structure in Revelation? So, that's kind of a fun thought. I'm sure somebody has caught that before. I just haven't read about it in any of the academic commentaries. So, so, but we have seven figures mentioned throughout this, not counting the beast. And so, "To him who sat on the cloud." And so, "Golden crown on his head and a sharp sickle in his hand." Mounts points out, "This is none other than the risen Christ." The background is Daniel, chapter 7, verses 13 and 14, in which "One like a son of man comes with the clouds of heaven to receive universal and everlasting dominion." The golden wreath designates the Messiah as one who has conquered and thereby won the right to act in judgment. The sharp sickle is the instrument of harvest and portrays the Son of Man prepared to reap the harvest of the earth in righteous retribution. Same Jesus. Just want to make sure those dots are connecting for everybody. Same one that gave the Beatitudes, the same one that, you know, was here and touching lepers and healing them and yep. So, "A few commentators identify the reaper as an angel rather than Christ. They argue that it would be strange for the exalted Christ to be commanded by an angel, and unlikely that he would not know that the end had arrived. But the angel is no more than a messenger from God, whose purpose is not to reveal the time of the end, but to deliver the divine command to begin the harvest, rather than taking the one like a son of man as an angel, so as to have yet another series of seven. The very title sets him apart from the six angels. While the designation may be used in apocalyptic as a normal reference to angelic beings, the context in Revelation indicates that he is the Messiah returning in judgment." So, so that is kind of the idea here. Most commentators will see this as Jesus. There's always a few that don't, right? And remember, Jesus himself said that the Father is the one who knows the time, and specifically the time of the end. So Jesus was completely deferring to the Father. It's the Father's direction. And that's one of the things that we said early on is there's this beautiful distinction within the Trinity throughout the book of Revelation. Their roles, who knows what, who is sent, you know, who's, you know, there's different missions that are assigned to them. I think in the book of Revelation, most notably, more so than any other book in the New Testament, do we have like a clear and functional theology of the Trinity? So, for what that's worth. Any questions on 14? Okay. Keener has just a little bit to contribute here. Oh, he quotes from Joel 3:13, where it says, "Put in the sickle, for the harvest is ripe; come tread, for the winepress is full." So we have not only Daniel 7, but also Joel 3 being referenced here for the sickle. And the Son of Man and that level of authority. Verse 15, "And another angel came out of the temple crying out with a loud voice to him who sat on the cloud, 'Put in your sickle and reap, for the hour to reap has come, because the harvest of the earth is ripe.'" So this is exactly what Mounts was just saying, where if you have Yahweh in his temple, you have a messenger coming out of the temple, speaking to the Son, now's the time. So, this is a word from the Father going forth. Does that make anybody uncomfortable? Just in those roles and just curious. For some reason, it doesn't make me uncomfortable at all. Actually, it's just kind of fascinating to understand that, you know, Yahweh is in his temple, the Son is hanging out on a cloud, looking awesome, got the crown going on, but a sickle within arm's reach. Like, like he's waiting for this moment. So, and you know, mind you, this is imagery. So how much of that is real and, you know, like, probably not gonna see a sickle come down upon the earth. I hope not. But, you know, so we have that metaphorical language of a harvest, right? So once again, I know we're 14 chapters into this, but this is a vision. So just, you know, we're not reading this like it's one of the Gospels or Paul's letters. This is unique in its own right. This is where we're kind of drifting back and forth between like a principle from the vision, a message from it of what is going to happen. But as far as how it's going to happen or what it's gonna look like, ah, that's the part that's a little bit fuzzy. Because, because that's kind of the vision part of it where like, it's like, it's like a dream, you know, you wake up from a dream and you know how it felt and you know kind of some of the core things that happened in it. But then it could just be endless and teasing out the details, right? And so as we're reading this, it's important to understand the impression that it leaves. And this was something that Scott McKnight was talking about. I think I quoted from him about, it's probably three, three or four weeks ago. It's the impression that the vision leaves with us. And then those continual admonishments that seem to kind of break up the more visionary aspects of the text. So it's all driving to a point. And so really like within this section, it's just understanding the role of the Son. Part of this could just be his conquest of the earth. For everything that we're reading, it's Jesus's return and conquest of the earth. That's the harvest. And as he's rolling into town, it's the beast and all those that follow him who are going against the Son. So that is, I think, in view here. And that's taking much more of kind of an Isaiah approach to it, where it's, there's a little bit more language of conquest in that, the different kingdoms that are in rebellion. So, verse 15 here, "The angel that delivers the divine command to commence the harvest comes out from the temple, the most holy place of the presence of God. Judgment upon sin is a necessary function of righteousness. He cries out in a loud voice to the one sitting on the cloud that he should take his sickle and reap, for the hour has come, and the harvest of the earth is ripe." So the command follows the language of Joel 3:13, as we just said from Keener. "There is a difference of opinion about the identity of those who will be harvested. Some understand this scene as the gathering of the righteous at the return of Christ, and interpret the next unit as the judgment of the wicked." Supporting this position is the fact that the New Testament, in the New Testament, the figure of the harvest is normally used of the gathering of people into the kingdom. So that's more of like, the harvest is ripe, you know, pray that Lord sends, you know, raises up more workers. And so Jesus is using that analogy there. Just because it's used elsewhere in Jesus's teaching doesn't mean that it's gonna have that same implication here. I mean, we don't use the same metaphors for just like one distinct way. They're a little bit more flexible than that. So, "The idea of an eschatological harvest, however, is not limited to the gathering of the elect. In the parable of the wheat and tares, it involves the gathering of the wicked for burning as well." And honestly, if we were to match this up with what we just read a few verses back in verse 10, that seems to match up a little bit better. Because in verse 10, "And he will be tormented with fire and brimstone, in the presence of the holy angels, and in the presence of the Lamb." In the Old Testament, the harvest was a regular symbol of divine judgment. Jeremiah, chapter 51, verse 33. Hosea, chapter 6, verse 11. So the harvest of verses 14 through 16 is likewise a general picture of the coming judgment. So this is where Mounts lands. "The time to reap is the precise moment determined by God. As in the hymn of the twenty-four elders in chapter 11, verse 18, 'The time for judgment and reward has come. The harvest of the earth is fully ripe.'" Let's go to 11, chapter 8, or chapter 11, verse 18. Starting in verse 16, "And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshipped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord God the Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign.' And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came, and the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets and the saints, and those who fear your name, the small and the great, and to destroy those who destroy the earth.'" "And the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple, and there were flashes of lightning and sounds, and peals of thunder, and an earthquake, and a great hailstorm." So once again, this could actually potentially be a circling back. So as we were talking about this before, the level of overlap that we have, almost like this spiral where there's certain points that are matching up, that Revelation's not written in kind of this consecutive order, that there is, you know, we've gotten to a point and then we're kind of moving on, but yet there's this huge overlap that is leading up to a certain place. Namely, when we go back to the seventh trumpet, chapter 11, verses 15, 15 through 19, you know, "The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Christ, and he will reign forever and ever." So we are, like, we just read the end. And so now, you know, we have this interlude and we've kind of moved forward in some of the details around the beast and different things. And so this is all leading up to what we just read in chapter 11, 15 through 19. Does that make sense? Is everybody kind of tracking on that? Once again, it's a revelation. It can be a little bit circular, it can, because it's capturing those themes and going deeper with those. Verse 16, "Then he who sat on the cloud swung his sickle over the earth, and the earth was reaped." So this is the one who sat on the cloud, and he takes his sickle and reaps. But he's not the only one, and we'll get to that. So in an interesting display of brevity, John does no more than state that the one who was seated on the cloud now swings his sickle over the earth and the earth is harvested. Details are left to the reader's imagination. Verses 14 through 16 portray judgment under the general figure of the harvest. Now, by means of the more vivid figure of the vintage, John stresses the violent carnage of that judgment. There are a number of structural similarities between the two visions, between verses 14 through 16 and verses 17 through 20. Each vision involves an agent Each vision involves an agent of God's wrath bearing a sickle. In each vision, the command to carry out God's judgment is given by another angel. At the same time, there are differences. The harvest was reaped by Christ himself, while the vintage is gathered by an angel from the temple of heaven, temple in heaven. The two visions present the same judgment from slightly different perspectives. The harvest served as a more general presentation of final judgment, while the vintage draws the reader's attention to the violent nature of the carnage. All right, verse 17. "And another angel came out of the temple, which is in heaven, and he also had a sharp sickle." So this is the interesting part. So what we just read, some people kind of see this as like, oh, we're going to talk about the same thing and just kind of rephrase it. But then most scholars are like, oh, wait a second. We're talking about a little bit different. Like first, there's not a Christ figure, but just an angel that is sent to do these things. We have a harvest and then it's a gathering of the vintage. Now, we're going to be pressing into a little bit more of the carnage aspect of it. So why does it circle back like this? Or why is it presenting two different perspectives? Are they the two sides of the same coin? Why? I don't know. Yes, yes. Just one, you know, he's bearing the title, the Son of Man. And with the role, with the crown, with these, you know, the different descriptors, it points to Jesus. Yeah, 15, there was an angel. Right, right. Right. The one like a son of man, right? And we don't have, you know, an angel described like that. So that's what makes this interesting. And remember, yeah, that was in a, trying to think if it was the last sermon or a couple of sermons ago, with the idea of the Son of Man. You know, that was a title for just, you know, it was used of Isaiah, it was used of Ezekiel, but then it took on other implications. Because Son of Man is just somebody who's like, if you have a not, a lot of non-human figures interacting with a human, right? It's like, you know, oh, you're a son of man. Or a daughter of man, right? That is just a title for like being human. Because, you know, the people that you're talking with are not. Because you have angels, you have cherubim, maybe you've got some seraphim flying, you know, you got like all these other entities, non-human. But then like what we see in Ezekiel and even in Daniel, the Son of Man takes on its own idea. Where it's, it's almost like this special apocalyptic title. And here's the cool part, is if you ever wondered like, why? Where, you know, why was that so significant back then? It's because you had somebody like the Son of Man approaching the Ancient of Days. Like this is something that no mortal, no human would have even thought to do. And yet this one did. And so then all of a sudden, the incarnation of Christ makes sense. He's the only one that actually fulfills that, because he is a Son of Man born into flesh and blood. So when we see one like a son of man, like, it's just, it's, it's this whole level of cool because, because it's speaking to humanity, this flesh and blood, this body, this image bearer, right? But that's not all. There's more to him. Oh, that's right. That's the risen Christ. That is the one who did die, but came back to life and is alive forevermore. So he's a little, he, he's a son of man, but not quite. He, he's like a son of man. He's that, but with the upgrade. Oh yeah, and the Son of God, right? So like, I mean, that is how special that is. So when we read a title like that with full apocalyptic understanding, because that's the context in which we're reading. I mean, we're reading about a harvest. This Son of Man has a sickle. So all the apocalyptic imagery from the, I mean, we're reading the culmination of prophecy. Actually, Baucham, Richard Baucham, actually, I mean, he's written a book called The Climax of Prophecy. It's like this thick. And it's just all about Jesus. And, you know, with the book of Revelation fulfilling, like this is the peak of everything that God has spoken through the prophets, it is all moving towards this point. There's plenty of prophecies about the first coming, but it's in the second coming that everything is going to be like, it's going to be resolved. It's all going to get sorted out. To the nth degree, it's all getting sorted. Everybody's getting judged, the world's being cleansed and renewed and set back up again for round two. So, I mean, that's a big picture. And it's important for us to have this view of Jesus. Because, because this is this, what we're reading now is in anticipation of him doing that. So we can't just be looking backwards. We need to kind of have this full view of who Jesus, one like the Son of Man, who he really is and what his role is. I mean, it, it's like working for, you know, you had a coworker. You know, I mean, imagine the disciples walking with Jesus, eating with them, hanging out with them, like all of those things, right? But then they recognize who he is. And if you'll just bear with me, just the idea of being like promoted. Well, they're not necessarily treating him like, like he's, you know, used to be the coworker. Or somebody that was maybe below them in rank, right? I mean, because remember, remember the scandalous background that Jesus had growing up. But we see a change as the ministry of Jesus goes on. From the cross, from the resurrection and how they're dealing with him. And, you know, showing up behind closed doors is a cool little trick to like, kind of rattle everybody and be like, I'm not the guy you just hung out with before. Same guy, but there's more. And so, yeah, so, so just as that whole idea grows, it's important for us to not just look back at the cross, but also look forward to the role of Jesus in the fulfillment of all things. So the uppercase idea is completely interpretive, interpretively based on the translator. But if you're going to get into like Greek, you're not going to see that difference. So, so there, there's just those clues that we have in English. You know, where it's just kind of like, it's, it's creating the object of those pronouns or, you know, so. Yeah, who is the subject here? They just are a son of man. Yeah.
So is it, is the, is the wording that intentional? That elsewhere in the Bible, it's like, son of man, son of man, like a-
Like a son of man. This is definitely echoing Daniel seven. Yep, 7:13. Here, let's go there. Yep, absolutely. Not that we've read Daniel seven enough in this class, right? Should all have it memorized. Actually, let's start at verse nine. Cause, cause why not? Ancient of days, I, we just need to bring that title back. Like, I just love that. For Yahweh, like the Ancient of Days. Oh, man. All right. "So I kept looking until thrones were set up, and the Ancient of Days took his seat. His vesture was like white snow, and the hair of his head like pure wool. His throne was ablaze with flames. Its wheels were burning fire. A river of fire was flowing and coming out from before him. Thousands upon thousands were attending him, and myriads upon myriads were standing before him. The court sat, and the books were opened." That's, that's so awesome. I mean, look, listen, you know, you talk about AI-generated images and stuff, I want to see that. Come on. That's amazing. But that, you know, like, look at fire. I mean, just the, the, you know, what he looks like. A river of fire, the throne is on fire. I mean, if you didn't know better from what, you know, where you were reading, what the source is, you would think like, oh, that's scary. That sounds evil. That sounds, you know, but remember how purifying fire is. Like this is absolute in its purest form, untouchable. "Then I kept looking, because of the sound of the boastful words which the horn was speaking. I kept looking until the beast was slain, and its body was destroyed and given to the burning fire. As for the rest of the beasts, their dominion was taken away, but an extension of life was granted to them for an appointed period of time." And what do the beasts represent? Government. "I kept looking in the night visions, and behold, with the clouds of heaven, one like a son of man was coming. And he came up to the Ancient of Days," you know, the one sitting on the burning flame-filled throne with a river of fire flowing in front of it. "And was presented before him, and to him was given dominion, glory, and a kingdom." So in the full context here of Daniel seven, all of these governments have been deposed and destroyed. And now a government has been given to him. One like a son of man. "That all the peoples, nations, and men of every language might serve him." His dominion is an everlasting dominion, which will not pass away. And his kingdom is one which will not be destroyed. So if you ever get really uncomfortable with how much I'm talking about like, you know, this government being destroyed or whatever, like, don't, don't misunderstand me. Luke is not an anarchist. Luke is a monarchist. Okay? Because what I'm reading here is all preparation for us having a king. Let's read this last part again. "And to him was given dominion, glory, and a kingdom, that all the peoples, nations, and men of every language might serve him." Like that's, that's the kingdom, that we are serving him. Obeying him. He gives an order and we do it. He says jump, and we're just jumping, but then we're also asking how high. "His dominion is an everlasting dominion, which will not pass away, and his kingdom is one which will not be destroyed." I've said this before, like when, as we're reading this, we could literally take the rest of our time tonight and just read the kingdom parables with new eyes. And it might give us chills and it might just scare the snot out of us. I mean, because some of those are exacting. We were just reading through these as a family in Gospel of Luke. And I think Luke's a little bit more tame than what Matthew records. And, and it's, I mean, Jesus, okay, the one that we believe, one like a son of man, he is walking the earth with his disciples, confronting Pharisees and Sadducees who are real antagonistic. And he, the future king, is telling parables of a king and a kingdom. And faithful stewards, and what happens to the unfaithful ones. All of a sudden, it carries a lot more weight. Probably a whole lot more than the disciples even had, like, in their, for, in their view, probably for the rest of their lives. Maybe there was this moment decades down the road where they were just like, oh, oh man, like, that's just connecting those dots. Wow, that's so powerful. So, one like a son of man. There you go. Verse 13 there of Daniel seven. So let's go ahead and read 17 through 20. And then we'll come back and hit 17. "And another angel came out of the temple, which is in heaven, and he also had a sharp sickle. Then another angel, the one who has power over fire," kind of takes new meaning after reading Daniel seven, huh? "came out from the altar, and he called with a loud voice to him who had the sharp sickle, saying, 'Put in your sharp sickle and gather the clusters from the vine of the earth, because her grapes are ripe.'" "So the angel swung his sickle to the, uh, to the earth and gathered the clusters from the vine of the earth and threw them into the great winepress of the wrath of God. And the winepress was trodden outside the city, and blood came out from the winepress up to the horses' bridles for a distance of two hundred miles." You know, that's only like four feet high for 200 miles. Yeah, so let me read through this and then I share some thoughts. Keener points out, because crushed grapes could look like human blood, this image playing on Joel, chapter 3, verse 13. And also Jeremiah 25:30, we'll read those in a moment, "was powerful for ancients, who were more familiar with the viticulture than most modern peoples are, contrast Christ and his people as a vine in John 15:1. This harvest image is particularly from Isaiah 63, 1 through 6. God goes on to tread the winepress of his fury and tramples the nations, splattering his garments with their lifeblood." All right, so we got some verses to look up here. Let's go. Let's start with Joel, chapter 3, verse 13. All right, Joel, chapter 3, verse 13. Start at verse nine, "Proclaim this among the nations; prepare a war; rouse the mighty men; let all the soldiers draw near; let them come up; beat your plowshares into swords, and your pruning hooks into spears." Which is opposite of what we read in Isaiah, right? "Let the weak say, 'I am a mighty man.' Hasten and come, all you surrounding nations, and gather yourselves there. Bring down, O Yahweh, your mighty ones. Let the nations be aroused and come up to the valley of Jehoshaphat; for there I will sit to judge all the surrounding nations. Put in the sickle, for the harvest is ripe; come tread, for the winepress is full. The vats overflow, for their wickedness is great. Multitudes, multitudes in the valley of decision; for the day of Yahweh is near in the valley of decision. The sun and moon grow dark," eclipse. "and the stars lose their brightness." Just kidding. It's already passed. "The sun and moon grow dark and the stars lose their brightness. Yahweh roars from Zion and utters his voice from Jerusalem. And the heavens and the earth tremble, but Yahweh is a refuge for his people and a stronghold to the sons of Israel. Then you will know that I am Yahweh your God, dwelling in Zion, my holy mountain; so Jerusalem will be holy." So Jerusalem will be holy, and strangers will pass through it no more. Boy, um, let's go to Jeremiah twenty-five. I'm gonna start at twenty-nine. For behold, I am beginning to work calamity in this city, which is called by my name, and shall you be completely free from punishment? You will not be free from punishment, for I am summoning a sword against all the inhabitants of the earth, declares Yahweh. Therefore you shall prophesy against them all these words, and you shall say to them, "Yahweh will roar from on high and utter his voice from his holy habitation. He will roar mightily against his fold. He will shout like those who tread the grapes against all the inhabitants of the earth. A clamor has come to the end of the earth, because Yahweh has a controversy with the nations. He is entering into judgment with all flesh. As for the wicked, he has given them to the sword, declares Yahweh. Thus says Yahweh, shavuot. Behold, evil is going forth from nation to nation, and a great storm is being stirred up from the remotest parts of the earth. Those slain by Yahweh on that day will be from one end of the earth to the other. They will not be lamented, gathered, or buried. They will be like dung on the face of the ground. Wail, you shepherds, and cry, and wallow in ashes, you masters of the flock. For the days of your slaughter and your dispersions have come, and you will fall like a choice vessel. Flight will perish from the shepherds and escape from the masters of the flock. Hear the sound of the cry of the shepherds and the wailing of the masters of the flock, for Yahweh is destroying their pasture. And the peaceful folds are made silent because of the fierce anger of Yahweh. He has left his hiding place like the lion, for their land has become a horror because of the fierceness of the oppressing sword and because of his fierce anger." Get all the warm and fuzzies. So, all right, Isaiah sixty-three. Isaiah sixty-three, starting in verse one. Who is this who comes forth from, who comes from Edom with garments of glowing colors from Basra? This one who is majestic in his apparel, marching in the greatness of his strength. It is I who speak in righteousness, mighty to save. Why is your apparel red and your garments like the one who treads in the winepress? I have trodden the wine trough alone, and from the peoples there was no man with me. I also trod them in my anger and trampled them in my wrath. And their lifeblood is sprinkled on my garments, and I stained all my raiment. For the day of vengeance was in my heart, and my year of redemption has come. I looked, and there was no one to help, and I was astonished, and there was no one to uphold. So my own arm brought salvation to me, and my wrath upheld me. I trod down the peoples in my anger and made them drunk in my wrath, and I poured out their lifeblood on the earth. For balance, verse seven, I shall make mention of the loving kindness of Yahweh, the praises of Yahweh according to all Yahweh, all that Yahweh has granted us, and the great goodness toward the house of Israel, which he has granted them according to his compassion and according to the abundance of his loving kindness. There you go. No nightmares. The author knew what he was doing there. But, I mean, isn't that, I mean, that's heavy. That is written from a first-person perspective. Like, there's a dialogue, and this is what this figure is saying. So, whew, man. So, back to Revelation fourteen. I think that was all the ones we were going to read, yes. So, verse eighteen. Then another angel, the one who has power over fire, came out from the altar, and he called with a loud voice to him who had the sharp sickle, saying, "Put in your sharp sickle and gather the clusters from the vine of the earth, because her grapes are ripe." So, I will say, just on the face of it, that what we're reading in seventeen through nineteen, seventeen through twenty, does bear much more of the marks of wrath, as opposed to what we read in fourteen through sixteen. So, it has that difference. It doesn't mean that we're talking about two separate and different harvests, or that like, oh, Jesus was nice enough to harvest his people, his own, right? And then here, this is, what we're reading is much more of wrath. Because as we've been reading in some of these other places, like Joel, Jeremiah, Isaiah, the figure doing the harvesting is God, or what we would think of as Jesus. So, what does that look like? How does that flesh out? Well, don't worry, you won't have a choice in the matter. I'm just saying that as we're looking at the text and interpreting it, I don't think it's anything to be dogmatic about, to be like, oh, like, that's, you know, the point where Jesus takes his people out so that he can pour out his wrath on all the bad people. I don't, I don't see that necessarily. I don't think Paul was convinced of that either, because Paul himself was talking about a transformation, like, in that moment when Jesus returns. And when he returns, he is reclaiming the earth. So, where's the bridge there, right? Now, that being said, verse eighteen. So yet another angel enters John's vision, this one from the altar, as the altar is elsewhere connected with the prayers of the righteous. We are probably to understand here that the prayers of the faithful play a definite part in bringing about God's judgment upon the wicked. The angel is further identified as the one in charge of the fire. In the developed angelology of the intertestamental period, angels are assigned to the various elements of nature. So, I'm not saying that this is true or accurate. I'm just saying that during the intertestamental period, there was a distinct theology around angels, and that there were elements that were attributed to angels. Enoch speaks of the angels of thunder, sea, hail, snow, and rain, and many others. So, I am not saying that that is true and accurate. Just saying that we read something rather curious in the phrasing here. Whew, so, so, have you, have you read Supernatural and Unseen Realm? Okay, so that might be an interesting cross-section here. Because, you know, that's when you get into the powers and principalities, some of the other forces and entities that God has created, maybe to be responsible, like, over the operating of the earth, right? So, yeah. Now, so, most of this comes from First Enoch, chapter sixty, verses eleven through twenty-one. I think that goes into detail. And Jubilees, chapter two, verse two. So, you will not find those in your Bibles, but a quick internet search and there you go. Once again, not validating that perspective, but it was just one that was held in the intertestamental period. And it's interesting that it shows up here, that we have an angel that is kind of like coming out of the altar, but is also identified as an angel of fire. So, but John undoubtedly has in his, in mind the angel of chapter eight, verse three through five. So, let's read from that real quick, because this is us letting scripture interpret scripture. Chapter eight, verses three through five. Another angel came and stood at the altar, holding a golden censer, and much incense was given to him so that he might add it to the prayers of the saints on the golden altar, which was before the throne, and the smoke of the incense with the prayers of the saints went up before God out of the angel's hand. Then the angel took the censer and filled it with fire of the altar and threw it to the earth, and there followed peals of thunder and sounds and flashes of lightning and an earthquake. So, this angel filled the censer with fire from the altar and cast it upon the earth. Fire is commonly associated with judgment in the New Testament. Matthew eighteen, eight. Luke nine, fifty-four. And Second Thessalonians one, seven. The angel who had charge of the fire commands the angel with the sharp sickle to gather the vintage. So, it's just interesting to think that, you know, we have angel conversing with angel, and like, an angel of fire, and, oh, yeah, there's an angel of the harvest. And, so, but here they are working together. So, passing along the orders that came from the temple itself. So, this follows closely the parallel command in the previous vision to reap the harvest of the earth. Joel, chapter three, verse fourteen, which we just read, is the model for both. Like the grain that has turned golden and must be harvested immediately, the grapes are fully ripe. The time for judgment is now. So, all right, verse nineteen, yes. Well, we, we have the same language in fifteen, because the harvest of the earth is ripe. Bless you. So, yeah. Yeah, so it's not to like, maybe portray a secular concept. But, what we have, yeah, I mean, is, either way, both are ripe for harvest. We just have the theme of wrath in the second one. So, and one like a son of man, responsible for the first one, and angel responsible for the second one. Yeah, I mean, it's, we'll know after it happens, right? So, after the second sickle, that's right. So, all right, verse nineteen. Any other questions that I can't answer? Okay, great. So the angel swung his sickle to the earth and gathered the clusters from the vine of the earth and threw them into the great winepress of the wrath of God. So without delay, the angel swung his sickle on the earth and gathered its vintage. We are not to think of the sickle as reaping on its own, but as active in the hand of the angel. First Enoch, fifty-three, speaks of angels of punishment, who prepare the instruments that destroy the kings and mighty of the earth. The angel is God's agent to execute wrath upon the unrighteous. Those who interpret the two scenes as the gathering of the elect and the judgment of the wicked usually point out that this grisly work is left to the angel rather than to the son. However, in chapter nineteen, it is Christ himself who treads the winepress of the fury of the wrath of God, supplying the vultures with a great feast of human flesh. John is not squeamish about the son entering into the execution of judgment. So, so the vintage is now thrown into the great, great winepress of the wrath of God. In biblical days, grapes were trampled by foot in a trough that had a duct leading to a lower basin where the juice collected. The treading of grapes was a familiar figure for the execution of divine wrath upon the enemies of God. In Isaiah, chapter sixty-three, verse three, which we read, "God the warrior returns from Edom with his garments stained as one who has been treading in the wine vat." He says, "I have trodden the winepress alone. I trod them in my anger and trampled them in my wrath. Their lifeblood is sprinkled upon my garments." The vintage of the earth is a collective expression, for all who by their obstinate refusal to embrace righteousness have made themselves the enemies of God. All right, verse, yeah, verse twenty. And the winepress was trodden outside the city, and blood came out from the winepress up to the horses' bridles for a distance of two hundred miles. Every time you read it, it's crazy. Keener points out, ancient reports of urban battles sometimes refer to streets flowing with blood due to the massive slaughter that occurred in a short span of time. For example, exaggerating the massacre of Bethar, the rabbis declared that rivers of blood flowed from the city to the distant sea, rolling boulders from their place and submerging horses. Likewise, First Enoch reported God judging people by letting them slay one another till blood flowed in streams, so that horses walked up to their chest in it and chariots were submerged. So that's an interesting parallel with what we're reading here. So that's from First Enoch, one hundred, verses one and two. Oh, I'm sorry, in verse three. Similarly, other oracles of the end time. The Sibylline oracles includes it several times. So the literal number, number here is sixteen hundred stadia, which is about two hundred miles. It's a square number, forty by forty. Probably used roughly for a large quantity, although some also report that some ancients estimated the length of Palestine to about sixteen hundred stadia. The wine of God's wrath turns out to be human blood here, which is drunk in chapter sixteen, verse six. Other texts also speak of being drunk with blood. So, couple little fun facts there for you. Mounts points out, the city outside of which the winepress was trodden is probably Jerusalem. The judgment of the nations in Joel, chapter three, twelve through fourteen, which supplies the dual figures of the harvest and vintage, takes place in the valley of Jehoshaphat, which tradition links with the Kidron Valley, lying between Jerusalem and the Mount of Olives. So that's on the east side. Zechariah, chapter fourteen, one through four, places the final battle on the outskirts of Jerusalem. Let's go to Zechariah, just so you remember where it's at. First, so that you remember it, it is a book of the Bible. Oh, man. Uh, Zechariah fourteen. And I gotta say, like, if you've not read Zechariah lately, it's, it's a good read. It really is. And Zechariah fourteen alone is fascinating. And I'm going to try and restrain myself and not read this entire chapter. So behold, a day is coming, starting in verse one. For Yahweh, when the spoil taken from you will be divided among you. For I will gather all the For I will gather all the nations against Jerusalem to battle, and the city will be captured, the houses plundered, the women ravished, and half of the city exiled. But the rest of the people will not be cut off from the city. Then Yahweh will go forth and fight against those nations, as when he fights on a day of battle. In that day, his feet will stand on the Mount of Olives, which is in front of Jerusalem on the east. And the Mount of Olives will be split in its middle from east to west by a very large valley, so that half of the mountain will move toward the north, and the other half toward the south. Okay, all right. I'm just gonna turn away from it, so I don't read it, so, all right. But there it is, on the outskirts of Jerusalem. I mean, many would consider that's just Jerusalem proper today. I mean, as much as the city's expanded to the surrounding hillsides. Uh, 1 Enoch 53:1 speaks of judgment in a deep valley near the valley of Henem. So that's a little bit more to the west. Judgment outside, and remember the valley of Ben Henem, right? That is kind of the model for a place of torment, punishment. Judgment outside the city must certainly be an allusion to the one who suffered for the sins of the human race outside the gate. Hebrews, chapter 13, verse 12. John 19:20. Those who refuse the first judgment must take part in the second. As a winepress yields the red juice of the grapes of the judgment of God issues in a bloodbath that flows as high as the bridles of the horses, and extends the length and breadth of the land. 1 Enoch 100, verse 3 speaks of carnage in which the horse shall walk up to the breast in the blood of sinners. The distance, 600 stadia, oh. Uh, let's see. So Mounts actually takes the 1600, the 40 by 40. Symbolically, it squares the number four, the number of the earth, four corners of the earth. Uh, chapter 20, verse 8, the four winds of the earth, and multiplies it by the square of 10, the number of completeness. So the judgment of God portrayed ideally as taking place outside the holy city extends to all people everywhere who find themselves beyond the pale of divine protection. So Keener was pointing out something that kind of encapsulated all of Israel or Palestine. And what Mounts is doing is taking that to the four corners of the earth. So as what we see here mentioned, the earth being harvested, and not just that local, uh, region. So judgment is certain, the followers of the Lamb are made to realize by means of the visions of chapter 14, that not only will they ultimately enjoy the immediate presence of God and the Lamb, but that their faith will be vindicated by the judgment brought upon their oppressors. The beasts of chapter 13 employ every method at their disposal to gain the allegiance of the entire world. But those who belong not to this world, but to the heavenly realm yet to be fully manifested, successfully resist both the deceptive ploys of the satanic beast and all their attempts to bring about allegiance by force. Any questions? Chapter 14. That's a mess, isn't it? So blood up to the bridles. All right. Just had chapter 15 prepared for a few weeks, this guy. A few weeks indeed. All right. We definitely shift gears, uh, as we get into 15, that's for sure. Case strip is done. Okay, so let's read through this chapter. It's only eight verses. We'll see if that, we get that done before summer. Just kidding, this will probably move quick, or whatever, I'm not even gonna make any promises. Chapter 15. Then I saw another sign in heaven, great and marvelous, seven angels who had seven plagues, which are the last. Because in them, the wrath of God is finished. And I saw something like a sea of glass mixed with fire, and those who had been victorious over the beast and his image, and the number of his name standing on the sea of glass, holding harps of God. And they sang the song of Moses, the bond servant of God, and the song of the Lamb, saying, great and marvelous are your works, O Lord God the Almighty, righteous and true are your ways, king of the nations. Who will not fear, O Lord, and glorify your name? For you alone are holy, for all the nations will come and worship before you, for your righteous acts have been revealed. After these things, I looked, and the temple of the tabernacle of testimony in heaven was opened. And the seven angels who had the seven plagues came out of the temple, clothed in linen, clean and bright, and girded around their chests with golden sashes. Then one of the four living creatures gave to the seven angels seven golden bowls full of the wrath of God, who lives forever and ever. And the temple was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power. And no one was able to enter the temple until the seven plagues of the seven angels were finished. Just when you thought it was gonna be like, oh, look, a song! You know, and then poof, switcheroo, right there. But hopefully, you're already kind of picking up on these themes, that even in judgment, God is to be praised and worshipped. That it is his righteousness, and what he is bringing about in judgment on the earth is a cleansing, is a full cleansing of the sin and death that has marred it since the beginning. What, what are some of your impressions as we read through this? Cause you know, just kind of harkening back, uh, to, you know, a quote from Scott McKnight of, you know, just reading this, and imagine being in one of those seven churches and hearing this message. When we get to this section, just on the heels of, you know, talking about wrath and everything else, that this harvest, what is it like, what kind of feelings does this elicit? Within you?
Fear.
Fear, fear trembling?
It's the justice side of God. We've been warned.
We've been warned, yeah.
The people were warned and warned and warned, and refused to believe it could happen.
Right. They were warned and warned and refused to believe that it would happen. Ah, yeah, I mean, absolutely, like, it's gonna happen, and then all of a sudden, everybody's gonna be surprised that it actually happened. Even though we could have, like, the church has been reading this for 2,000 years. And even when it happens, we're just, we're all gonna be surprised.
Kind of watching some crazy guy build a big boat, right?
It's like watching a crazy guy build a big boat. And you know, for the fact that like, it's never rained before that, right? That's right. I remember, uh, reading something, it was like, fight like you're the, uh, you're monkey number three to get on the boat, and it's starting to rain. So there's your motivation for in the morning, right? It's like, oh, you know what? I'm setting myself apart from, you know, allegiance to the world, I am allegiance to the King. So. Um, how do you think the churches in Asia Minor, that the seven churches, how, how would they have heard what we're reading? Remember, I mean, some of them live the life of luxury. Political. You know, comfort, protection, maybe because of wealth. Others were suffering persecution. I mean, you know, and they're only separated by like 12 miles, you know, that's the crazy part. Yeah, absolutely, and, and this is the testimony of the word of God, right? Is that we can read this, and we can have some level of mental ascent. And we just, we hope and we pray, and that's the idea of putting things into action now and living in such a way, right? It's training, it's practice, so that when something like that happens, we just, we don't just go into hiding, we continue living for the glory of God. That it's not just this idea of like, oh, it's gonna happen over there, but here, I'm fine. It's having those eyes wide open. And staying alert, and just being like, oh, we got a job to do, we got a mission. It doesn't matter if it's raining, or snowing, or hail, or fire, or whatever else, or a beautiful sunny day. We got a job to do. Every day, to be and make disciples. To have that impact and to, to really recruit others into the kingdom. That's what we're doing. So. Yeah. How do you think they would have taken the, uh, the wrath parts of this? Yeah. No, no, absolutely, and really, I mean, even for what we're reading, because we are in the thick of like the judgment and wrath of Revelation, right? Uh, even though there's plenty of the book left, um, boy, we are hitting these themes hard. But think of the balance that it brings, how easy it would be to ignore maybe some of those teachings of Jesus, or even the Olivet Discourse, or whatever it might be. Uh, some of those themes of judgment that he brings in his own teachings in the Gospels, and just to kind of like skirt right over that. Uh, Paul touches on some of that here and there in some of the letters, like, uh, you know, I, I think Romans, but he doesn't unpack it like in depth, not like this. So think of the, the, the balance that Revelation brings to the New Testament alone. And drawing out the themes that Jesus had already talked about, uh, those themes of judgment. So, does that make sense? Finally, it's coming from the altar. Yeah, absolutely. And so, so that was kind of the implication, that's what Mounts would touch on before, that this is like an answer to the prayers of those who had already been martyred. Yeah, the different periods of, I mean, you, you just didn't know what, from year to year. You know? I mean, talk about the anxiety that we have with, you know, presidential elections of the last, you know, I don't know, 15, 20 years, and ramp that up by 100. You know, because it was seriously life and death. We're not just talking about economic issues, we're talking, oh, am I gonna be hunted for the next few years, or you know, till this emperor dies, or not? Are we gonna have to change countries because of this, or, you know, like? And you know, it's not that everybody had the means to even do that. Like, our, you know, our ease of moving from one country to another is exponentially easier than it was for them back then. So. Yeah. I mean, this is, so, so I think they definitely. You know. Some of this is an answered prayer. Yep, and that's why, like, and that's why, I mean, believers, we should all be reading our bibles from cover to cover. I mean, just to, just to know, just to know what's in there, to know the, the spectrum of ability, like, you know, a possibility of like how God acts in the world. The things that he does allow in bringing a chastening upon his people. Bad things happen in your life, and it's like, oh, you know, there must not be a God, or you know, whatever else. You did not read the same Bible that I've been reading. These things happen, we live in a fallen world. And a lot of times, those things are allowed to wake us up and get us on the right path, because we've gotten lazy or sloppy. Or sometimes, it's just a hardness for what is to come. It's preparatory. It's training. And so, you know, like, there's just, but when we read all of the text, I mean, where have we been going? We've been going to the Old Testament and reading where, oh, this is where John's like pulling the language for this, right? We, we know what he saw, but he's pulling language from the Old Testament and communicating a rooted theology about this judgment. Yeah, and, and it's not. This is not opposed to love, this is still an act of love, the love of God. Like, that's, that's, it's, this is, his wrath is not in tension with his love.
And we still have the hope.
This is a righteous anger that is bringing judgment upon the earth, that is in rebellion against him, and that is killing his people. But the door is wide open for the enemy to come in and be a part of his people, that's his grace. You get extra points if you include any of these chapters in your gospel presentation to like coworkers and stuff. And on that note, I just realized we're about five minutes after, so thanks for bearing with me.